...Z Royce Smith, and I'm the Chair of the Public Utility Commission, but for purposes of this case, I'm a hearing officer. The case is PUC case number 19-3236-PBT, the petition of Potter Creek Solar LLC pursuant to 30 DSA Section 248, a certificate of public good authorizing the installation and operation of Stark Solar Project, a 2.2 megawatt solar electric generation facility in Vanuatu, Vermont. This is a public hearing. I want to make sure everyone understands what it is and what it is not. It is an opportunity for the members of the public to express to the hearing officer any concerns that you have about this project, or any things that you have to say about the project that are positive. We have already received one written public comment which was supportive of the project. So either supporting statements or concerns are more than welcome. That information is useful to the commission and to the hearing officer because it provides us with some idea of what the public might be concerned about with the project, or what they like about the project. And we then have the power to request the information from the petitioner, or from the department, or from A&R, or from any other party to the proceeding, some kind of response to that particular concern. But the comments themselves don't become evidence in the record. And I wanted to take just a moment to make clear the difference. We are a statutorily created agency of Vermont, what's called a quasi judicial body. And what that means is that the judicial side of quasi judicial is that we act like a court. We don't make decisions unless we have evidence. We have three choices whenever a proceeding comes before us. We can grant what is asked for, including granting the conditions. We can deny what is asked for, and we can say that we are unable to either deny or grant because we do not have an adequate evidentiary record on which we can make a decision. Evidence is a legal term for purposes of this, and there are rules of evidence that control what can be received as evidence. An example would be a witness with personal knowledge of something comes before us and testifies. They tell us the facts that they had seen. That's evidence. The other parties to the proceeding have an opportunity to ask questions designed to determine whether or not those facts are well founded. So for example, if someone says, "I saw something," but it turns out that that person needs glasses in order to see well, but they did not wear their glasses at the time that the event took place, the cross-examination might show that that person's fact statement was in doubt. There are also opinions that are there, and in general, opinions can only be offered by experts. Experts are people who, as a result of training, or experience, or educational credentials, have a special status that allows them to offer an opinion. And experts have rules that they have to follow before they can offer an opinion. So just because you have a PhD doesn't mean that you can get in front of us and just say, "You know, last night, I was thinking about this case, and I think that the applicant is completely right," and sit down. That's not an admissible opinion. The expert has to have a basis for the opinion. The expert has to follow a methodology that is used by experts in that experts field to form those opinions. And the expert must demonstrate that they have used that methodology in order to reach an opinion. There's a lot of very strict evidentiary rules that courts apply. We apply the same evidentiary rules, but we don't apply them strictly. So for example, in a court, hearsay, not something you know personally, but something somebody else told you, is usually not admitted as evidence. In front of the Public Utility Commission, we will sometimes allow hearsay evidence, and we'll decide how much weight we might give it. And so that's different than court. So we're more likely to let the evidence in, but we might not give it a whole lot of weight. If someone says, "Well, I heard from Joe, and Joe heard from Mary, and Mary heard from Bill that XYZ is the case," we might say, "Okay, we'll let you put it in, but we want to know..." Not going to give that much weight. If, as a kid, you ever played the game Russian Gossip? People sit around a table, and you whisper a secret to someone next to you, and then they have to whisper that secret to the person next to them, and by the time it comes back, it bears very little resemblance to what the first person said. That's why there's a hearsay rule. So we've got these evidentiary rules, and we try not to apply them too strictly. We also have rules about how the hearing is conducted. In a court of law, for example, you're not usually, if it's your own witness, you're not allowed to ask the witness a question in which you state what the answer is, and then say, "Is that true?" It's called leading the witness. We let a lot of leading witness testimony come in because it makes the case move more quickly. And we know that the witness has already been coached by the lawyer as to what they're supposed to answer anyway, so it's a little bit of a game. So if you want to participate in the proceeding, you can do it in several ways. One, you can observe. You can participate. You'll find in these documents that I passed out, or that are available for you here, how to use EPUC. It's the Electronic Public Utility Commission's docket. Every piece of paper that is filed in this case by any person, including public comments, are put into EPUC. And you can sign up on EPUC. You don't even have to give your name if you don't wish to, but you sign up, and once you sign up, you can say, "I want to get a notice every time something is filed in this case." And if you've done that, every time something is filed, our clerk's office automatically sends you an email and says, "Something got filed in this case." And it gives you a brief description. It's a motion, or it's an objection, or it's a piece of evidence. That's one way. And so you can keep an eye on the case. You can decide whether or not something's happened that you want to comment on, which you're free to do, file a public comment. The public comments go into the EPUC as well. The second way that you could participate in the proceeding is to become a party. In order to do that, you file a petition to intervene. We've had petitions to intervene already filed in this case. There are rules, again, identified in these handouts as to what is expected in order to qualify as an intervener in a case. Some people, like the Department of Public Service, is automatically a party by statute. Agency of Natural Resources, automatically a party by statute. And other people can either be automatically treated as a party if they qualify as a matter of right, or there's a discretionary opportunity to petition intervene. All of that's explained in these documents. And what happens if you become a party is that then gives you the right, one, to offer evidence, two, to cross-examine the witnesses that the other parties offer in evidence, and to write briefs to the commission in support or in opposition to something that somebody else has filed. It also includes responsibilities, including that the other party can ask you questions, just as you can ask them questions. And there's some control over what questions can be asked, how many can be asked, what way they can be asked. But in general, it's intended to allow everybody to know, before we ever get to a hearing, what everybody else knows, what their basis is for knowing it, and why they believe that the position they're taking is correct, and what they think, and what the basis is for what they think of the other party's position. This, unlike anything that you see on TV, a trial is not intended to be a surprise party. It's more like a play. Everybody should know what everybody else thinks before you ever get to the evidentiary hearing, and you should present your play, your script, with a reasonable amount of predictability from everyone else as to what you're going to say, and why you're going to say, and what the basis is for. And that makes the hearings move more smoothly. One of the things that we do in hearings that are different than what courts do is that we require the parties to prefile their testimony, what's called direct testimony. So if you want to offer testimony, you prefile it. That means you write it out in the most convenient way to do it, although it's not absolutely required, is as a question and answer. So if you wanted to offer fact testimony, you would start by asking the question, "What is your name?" And then you'd write down what the answer is. "What is your interest in this proceeding?" And you'd write down the answer to that. "Where do you live?" Write down the answer to that. "What is your concern?" Write down the answer to that. And those Q and A, that's called prefiled direct testimony. Other parties can file prefiled rebuttal testimony to that, and usually, there's an opportunity for prefiled reply or surrebuttal testimony in which the proponent who offered the testimony gets a chance to say something in response to what the other party prefiled. We don't have, that doesn't go on indefinitely, but we try to get as much of that in, in advance, from all the parties. And that testimony then is admitted into evidence at the proceeding, subject to the right of any party to say, "That person's testimony should not be allowed in, for whatever reason, or portions of it shouldn't be allowed in." We rule on whether or not that testimony is admissible. If it is admissible, then it's subject to cross-examination by any other party in the proceeding, and the parties who offer the testimony sit on the witness stand, they're under oath, they answer the questions. And in cross-examination, the party who offered the testimony has an opportunity, after the testimony has been cross-examined, to do something that's called redirect. So they can ask the witness more questions based upon the scope of what the cross-examination was. Sometimes, for instance, the cross-examiner will say, "I have a question for you. I want a yes or no answer." And the witness might say, "Well, I can't give you a yes or no answer to that." And the person will say, "I want a yes or no answer." They say, "I have an explanation." They say, "Well, you don't give it now." And that's allowed. The questioner can say, "I just want to hear yes or no." But then on redirect, the lawyer or the party who's the witness's sponsor can say, "Do you remember that question we told you had to ask, yes or no?" "Yes." "Did you have anything else you wanted to add to your answer?" "Yes, I did." And then you can give the rest of your answer that way. So there's a lot of opportunity at the hearing to make sure the record's complete. My job as the hearing officer is to make sure that when the hearing's over, every party has had a fair opportunity to put into the record everything that they believe supports the position they're taking. And when the hearing ends, the parties will then brief the case, which is you file proposed findings of fact. These are usually done. You can look at commission orders deciding cases involving the citing of proposed projects like this one. And you can see there are numbered paragraphs in which the commission hearing officer makes findings. And those findings are, it's best if they're divided up so that each numbered paragraph has one finding in it, not ten findings buried under one number. And all the parties file proposed findings of fact, and a brief in which you can argue why those facts support the position you're taking. Those are all filed simultaneously by all sides, and then at a certain period of time after that, all sides filed simultaneously reproof briefs, in which they respond to what the other parties said. Sometimes, there's an oral argument, usually not in front of the hearing officer. The hearing officer then issues something called a proposal for decision, and that's what I would do. I would write a proposal for decision. I send that out to everyone. Everyone then has an opportunity to ask the commission to hear those arguments, usually an oral argument, and they file a brief in which they basically ask the commission to either affirm what the proposal for decision said, alter it in some way, or come to an entirely different conclusion. Because I'm the Chair of the commission, but also the hearing officer here, I would not sit with the other two commissioners to decide any issue that goes in front of the commission in this case. So if there's a decision that I reached, and someone wants the commission to review, they will have two commissioners, Commissioners Hoffman and Cheaney, who will decide those questions, and I will not be part of the decision process. I will be sitting in when the commission considers the case, and I will explain why I came to the conclusions that I came to, but I will not be the decider. And the fact that I'm the Chair has no weight at all in that process, because as the Chair, I have absolutely no control over the other two commissioners, a fact that they remind me frequently. So that's how the process will work. Now, do you have any public comments that people would like to make? And I see one new person has come in. Would you make sure that he puts his name on our sign-up sheet?
All right.
Okay. Does anybody wish to say? You don't have to.
I just want to...
Can you say your name before you start, please?
It's Martha Wiles, W-I-L-E-S. I just wanted to raise a number of issues. I know, I don't know if it's supposed to be at this time or not, but...
No, this is exactly the time for you to raise issues if you wish.
So we, at the Harvard Hill Motel, have a number of concerns. One of our concerns is very similar to our concerns that we expressed in the previous hearing for the Warner Solar Project. One of our concerns is the aesthetics, as it affects our views at the motel, particularly with, in leave-off conditions, which we don't think that has been adequately addressed or is being considered. And is, we are a year-round business, so we still have aesthetic concerns even in the middle of winter. Some of our, part of our property gets closed down, but there's other part that's open. So we would really like to make sure that the character, basic character of property isn't disrupted, because what kind of sell ourselves is this place with a beautiful view. It's right there in our sign in front. And, and solar panels aren't beautiful. I mean, I don't know. Guess it's subjective, isn't it? So we are also concerned about the disruption to our business during the construction period, which is going to be, from my understanding, up to five months long. A hundred and fifty feet from the property line where our building stands touches, basically. There's going to be, I'm assuming, a lot of sawing and beaking from at least eight till 5:00 PM every single day for a long, long time, presumably during our busiest season. So we're concerned about that. We're a little concerned about that. Prospect of having sheep housed on the property, again, a hundred and fifty feet from one of our buildings, is someone is going to be sleeping there, and if the sheep are disturbed by, you know, the presence of a predator, even if they're contained within a fence, we're just, we're afraid that they might start, I mean, I don't know how many sheep there are going to be, but if there's a lot of them, then we could have guests who are Let's see. We're concerned about kind of the adherence to the spirit of the town plan, which has limits on the size of these types of developments. And we feel as if the fact that there are three sites that might technically fall within the limits because they're right adjacent to each other, we don't think that, we think that that is an issue or should be an issue. We're concerned that this is being zoned as rural residential. We don't see how a solar farm qualifies under, that's not our understanding of rural or residential. So also, just as a person, a citizen, I'm doing my own lay research about deforestation. I'm, you know, personally concerned about the deforestation that's going on here. And I know that there is, the science may not be settled. I know that there was a, the petitioner cited an op-ed in the New York Times of some scientist who is claiming that northern forests, although I believe it's more coniferous forests, might actually be detrimental to global warming. I think that's not the consensus view. I think that the consensus view of people who study these matters is that trees are actually beneficial. And I am a little confused about why this particular forested area is being even considered for this project, rather than a site with out trees. So that's the summary of our concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else who have comments to make?
I have a question.
Your name?
You have to give your name to the court.
My name is Richard Carroll. Are we going to receive more information, more drawings of what this is actually going to look like today than this one?
Are you going to see it tonight?
No, are we going to be able to get them today, so I can take them home and really look at?
You can look at EPUC and find everything the applicant has filed. They have prefiled testimony that was filed, if I remember correctly, maybe 12th of August?
I think that's right.
Something like that. There are a number of representations on there. And during the course of this proceeding, to the extent that parties ask discovery questions, or the Chair asks questions of the applicant, more information may get filed. If you register in EPUC, as I explained before you got in, you can get notice every time anything is filed, a discovery request, a discovery response, any of that, and you can see information that is there. You can file public comments and explicitly ask for something. You can say, "I think the commission needs to see X and make that comment, and I think that is a legitimate concern, and that we don't have what we need for that information." I might ask the applicant that, or the applicant might, on his own, say, "Oh, okay, we can provide that." But there is quite a bit of information already there. You may not find it satisfactory. You may think it needs to be more complete, and that's an opportunity to comment, or if you choose to become a party, to use formal discovery process, and then the applicant will be required to respond unless they object to the discovery request. And I rule that objection is valid. Anything else? Representative Morrissey?
I'm not sure, and do you need the spelling, M-O-A, I guess, you want? I'm not sure if it's appropriate at this time to reiterate what I said at the site visit for the record.
Absolutely, sure, yes, because this will be recorded, be written down, and I will provide a summary of these public comments that will appear on the commission's website, which is different than EPUC, but there will be a summary there, plus the transcript of tonight's meeting.
So I will reiterate what I said up at the site on why the heading goes. I am very concerned that, based upon our last site visit, the request that was put forth to everyone going forward, to have a real honest, for not only the developer, but for those involved who have concerns, that we have a site visit at the time that leaves it off the trees. We are so abundant, we feel they are still on the trees, we can't get a clear picture of this. We also requested that this be easily marked out so that people could actually see it visually, and none of this has been done. And so to have a public hearing tonight, when we basically have seen virtually nothing different, and you can't really assess from what we looked at, received, oh, I have great concerns that this would be a field process going forward.
Anything else?
Not at this time.
Mr. Grayman, although you are the official videographer, you also are a member of the public. Do you have any comments?
I don't believe I have any at this time, except I would support the representative's position that it was difficult to assess the impacts of a cleared site and, you know, the array erected without, I understand the limitations of the forest being there, but it's difficult to fully assess what the impacts would be.
Are there any other comments?
I actually have one more comment.
Sure.
Just to point out that when we were touring the site and we were walking along Rice Lane, we could clearly, the point of demarcation where the fence was to be constructed, only, and the only part marked was the portion on the east side, not the one running parallel to Rice Lane. But even just that one portion, we could see very clearly from Rice Lane as we were standing there. And I believe that, that there might be some issue with the town plan, or with the town's position in terms of screening, screening from the, from the road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So just, just for clarification, one function of this public hearing is also to provide the applicant an opportunity to understand the public's comments and concerns, and make adjustments as may be necessary to allay those concerns. So just wanted to kind of remind them of that.
I'm sure they're aware. Okay. Yes, Representative Morrissey?
One further question is that, at the hearing that we were told that agreement somewhat was made with the town and the developer, it was our understanding, and it was said actually in testimony, that the project had to be completely screened. What is the understanding of this commission as to what screening is all about? Because quite honestly, I'm confused as to what's being allowed across the state.
I'm not in a position to state what the commission's position, or even in my status as a hearing officer, would be to the question of screening. I can tell you that there's a standard that the commission applies that's called the CUACH test. That's Q-U-E-C-H-E-E. Did I write that?
Your honor.
Based upon a project that's built in a different part of the state, in which an attorney convinced the then Environmental Board and eventually the Supreme Court that Part of the Q-U-E-C-H-E-E test is if you discover first that the proposed project is adverse, which means that it's out of character with the area, that it's viewable from certain areas where the public can see it, that, that makes it adverse. That doesn't make it objectionable automatically, but that then takes you to the second part of the Q-U-E-C-H-E-E test. The second part of the Q-U-E-C-H-E-E test imposes on the applicant an obligation to answer three questions. Does this violate a clear community standard? Is there a standard that this project doesn't comply with? Has the applicant created something that would be offensive and shocking to the public? An example of that, an obvious example, would be if, instead of a solar project, they were proposing a refinery at this location. And the third part of the test is, the applicant has to be able to meet all three. The third part of the test is, has the applicant taken all reasonably available measures to mitigate the adverse effect? It's in that third part where the question of screening comes in. So normally, under commission's decisions, they look at, if there is an adverse effect, what has the applicant done in this case to mitigate that adverse effect? If they've done nothing, then, and there are steps they could have taken that are reasonable, then that might fail the Q-U-E-C-H-E-E test, and they then might be found to have an undue adverse impact that could cause the project to be turned down.
Would I be able to ask, and it may not be appropriate, what does reasonable mean?
Oh.
Because that is defined differently by probably everyone in this room.
Absolutely. Reasonable is one of the reasons that lawyers get paid all this big money. It's a word that has no clear meaning. And the commission decisions, or any court decisions for that matter, basically, they, they are not subject to some objective, that, that's always going to be reasonable, and that's always going to be unreasonable. In general, what it would mean is, one, is it technologically possible? That would be the first thing. So if you couldn't technologically do it, it wouldn't be reasonable. The second thing is, is it economically feasible? If it would cost $100,000 to do something in order to get rid of an undue adverse impact, that might be deemed to be unreasonable, if it would cost $1,000 to get rid of an undue adverse. In fact, that might easily be considered reasonable. Obviously, the questions that always come up is it somewhere between $1,000 and $10,000, and then, or $100,000. So that's another way to, to look at it, is whether it's economically feasible. A third might be, is it feasible in terms of time? For example, an applicant might say, "I'm going to mitigate the consequences of this view that you've got. I'm going to plant these trees," but they won't screen until 15 years from now. And I could put in trees that would be able to screen now, but they would come $100,000 cost versus these little trees that I want to put in that come in at $1,000 cost. And in cases like that, for example, is, you might have testimony about, well, you could get this other kind of tree that grows faster, you could put them in this other way that would provide different screening, you could use bushes rather than that, you could relocate the project to a different part of the site where it would be blocked in some way by the geography of the area. So as you can see, it, it's very site-specific, very much depends upon the site. And in a case like this, the applicant may or may not offer mitigation measures, it will be, the parties that think there should be more mitigation measures, they will have some burden to indicate what mitigation measures they think should be required, and at least to give some indication of why they think those are reasonable mitigation measures. I don't think that, I know that's not a satisfactory answer, but that's about the best I can do is to say...
Oh, no, you're fine. It's just, screening, obviously, the way this is described, really is in the eye of the beholder, and it doesn't really pertain to any of these projects. It's kind of, you can put four-foot trees in that aren't going to screen anything, and yet you're telling people it's going to screen it, but not 15 or 20 years. So that's not screening in my eyes.
Right. And that's the kind of argument that, if that were the case here, that's the kind of argument that, that the opponents would make if the applicant were to propose a four-foot tree that would not be screened for 15 years. So that, that's the way the issue would resolve. Any other public comments? Hearing done. Thank you all very much for coming. We are going to, if, if Mr. Malone continues to propose projects in the Bennington area, I imagine we'll be seeing each other a lot, because I've sort of designated myself as the hearing officer for the Bennington projects, at least for the moment. In any event, thank you for coming. I know the applicant and the department had an information session in advance. Thank you all for doing that. Thank you for the site visit today, which I enjoyed very much. And whoever made the weather get good, thanks for that. Richard. Does anybody want copies of this?
What is that?
This just explains our process and how one can intervene, but there's some guidance in there about, yeah, about how to be a party. Here, there's, they're a little different, each one.
Well, we're already a party, so, but this is, okay, I'll just, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think, and you'll find, by the way, as an, as a, as an intervener, you'll find that there's a lot of guidance available on our website for, for how to be an intervener, what to do, and our clerk's office is always available, and they're very good.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you all again.